Five, four, three, two, one. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, December 29th, 2020. Councilmember Farrelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Golumback.
Here.
Councilmember Nowakowski.
Present.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Present.
The camera stopped.
Council President Pridgen. Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Coram is present.
From the top.
Item number one, 2020 food store license renewals.
Items open.
This item is open. We are just reminding, if we can go back to the agenda, please. This is just an announcement to remind the council members to look into the renewals for the different food store licenses in their district. The renewals are coming up in just a few months. So we're going to table this item, but this is just to serve as a reminder for all the council members, for the ones in their district. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can someone just tell us, what is the, what is the cost of a license? And I know there's like two different types within a deli license. Is anybody on that can tell us what the cost is? If not, we can ask someone later, I can get that information. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Motion is to table, seconded by Councilmember Golumback.
Item number two, food store license 982 Broadway.
Items open.
This item is open, this is in the Fillmore District. Is there someone here to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, yes, there's the applicant. So I'm gonna let the applicant speak first.
Okay, is the applicant here? Is the applicant here to speak on this item?
The applicant, Attorney Mitchell, you are muted right now.
Okay.
Hold on one second, he just.
I think we're gonna hold this matter in abeyance and move to the next item unless, if there's some technical issues right now, unless the person has it resolved.
Motion to hold it in abeyance?
Hey, motion is to hold it in abeyance, seconded by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number three, right to know law proposal.
Items open.
This item is open. We have some speakers here, I believe John Elmore and possibly some other members of the Minority Bar Association of Western New York are here to speak on this item. Attorney Elmore, you have the floor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Members of the common council, it's an honor and privilege to address you. I applaud your efforts that have been, come forth this past year on police reform, which is necessary. We, we members of the Minority Bar Association, our lawyers who are involved with the citizens of the community every day, they have interactions with the police department. And in reaction to all of the protests, the unrest that has gone on the past year across the nation and in the city of Buffalo, we, we decided that we wanted to do our share in a positive and constructive way in making sure that our community is safe, that our police department is more transparent and more effective in serving the citizens of Buffalo. So we looked at some of the best police practices in New York City and in Syracuse. And in response to a lot of problems in New York City where African Americans were stopped and fisted by the police without any reason, that in 2018, New York City adopted a right to know law. And in October of this year, Syracuse followed the lead of New York City and they filed, they, they passed the right to know law. We, the right to know law, the purpose is to give citizens the right to know who is stopping you, why they are stopping you, advising citizens in certain circumstances where there, the search is not mandatory, that they have the right to not consent to the search. And then, at the end of, of the, the search, the citizen would be informed that if there is a complaint, how to file a complaint. And then there's a question of the law that requires the police department to keep statistics on the number of people that are stopped and how and why they're stopped. Buffalo is the second largest city in New York, in New York State. Syracuse is the fifth. We believe that when it comes to having a modern police department, that we should be one of the leaders when it comes to utilizing the best police practices. Buffalo has taken a step, we believe, in the wrong direction recently when there was a unilateral action without going in front of the Police Advisory Committee. The policy change where police officers no longer display their name tags and in certain circumstances, at least for a while, they were not displaying their exact badge numbers. So that's a scary situation for youth that are on the street, young people that are on the streets, citizens on the street when they're stopped and pulled over by a police officer who does not have his, have a mask on, who does not, who has a mask on, you can't see their face, you don't know their name is, and then they're asking you for your identification and who you are. We believe that the public has a right to feel safe when they have encounters with the police department. They have a right to know who's questioning them and, and why they're being stopped. Oftentimes, when a citizen asks a police officer for his name and his badge number, that escalates the situation. Oftentimes, when a, a citizen will say, you know, officer, I want to know your badge number, I want to know who you are, why you're stopping me. Sometimes the response is shut the hell up. And sometimes the police officer will think that this guy may be, or female may want to file a complaint against them and, and then, and then it escalates to an arrest and oftentimes in a, an arrest and sometimes the use of physical force. But when a officer displays his name tag, it's, it's, it's a fail-safe way that the, the person knows who's stopping them. People should have a right to know why they're stopped. We have a Fourth Amendment to the Constitution that says that people have a right to be free from unreasonable searches, seizures, that's codified in the Constitution of the State of, of New York. We're also asking in this law to have the police officer document why they were stopped and give the person a card indicating why they were stopped and how to, to file a complaint. We feel that this will make our community safer. This will make the police department more responsible and responsive to the public. There's a huge mistrust in, in the minority communities between African American, Hispanic communities who oftentimes have been subject to aggressive police enforcement that other sections of the city are not subjected to. And I'm willing, the floor is open to any questions that I may have, but the legislation that we've proposed in written form has been adopted from what has been adopted in New York City and in Syracuse. And we believe that Buffalo, the number two city in, in size and population in the state of New York, should be one of the leaders when it comes to police transparency and best police practices.
Thank you very much for your comments, just a few housekeeping items. So right now, we have, I believe there's 57 participants that are here for various items that are on the agenda today. On my screen, I can only see 20 people. So after we call out each item and people speak, I'll, I will make sure to ask if there are any other speakers. If I don't, if you wave your hand or something and I don't see you, you can just chime in because I can only see just over a third of the people that are on this. Second of all, since we do have such a full, we have a very full agenda, we're asking all speakers to keep their comments at three minutes. And if you have comments that you would like to add that you are not able to get in, in the three minutes, you can send myself an email or Malcolm Eartha, the Council Chief of Staff, an email. And we will distribute that to all of the members that are not only on this committee, but all council members.
So. Mary, Samantha White and Miles Gresham are from the task force as well and have asked to speak.
Yes, who is the first individual you said?
Miles Gresham.
Okay, Miles, you have the floor.
Councilman Farrelotto, other members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I am also here as a member of the Minority Bar Association to speak in support of the proposed right to know law. As John, you know, pointed out, you know, we need to be able to hold officers accountable. Police officers in our society have extraordinary powers, which most of us agree that they should have, right? They have the right to detain people. And if necessary, they even have the right to use force, even deadly force, to protect society. The, the other side of that is, in a free society, that if they violate those powers, if they use them unjustly, we should be able to hold them accountable. Being able to name police officers is the first step in being able to hold those, that small percentage of police officers who abuse their power to account. Right now, with officers' name tags not being on their uniforms, it's very difficult to do that. You know, the, the official response from the police department has been, well, they still have their badge numbers, so write down the badge numbers or memorize them. When you're in a situation with the, with the police, particularly with a hostile officer, that's a really tense situation, everyone can't remember those numbers. And certainly those of us who are people of color who have been pulled over, you know, know that, you know, pulling something out of your pocket, even if it's just a pen to write down a number, can really put your life in danger. So we feel that putting the names back on officers' new uniforms is something that the city should back. Also, in the law that we've proposed, we've asked the city to codify the stop receipt requirement. This is a requirement that the mayor implemented by executive order this summer. And not all police officers are following it. That, that stop receipt requirement requires them to give any motorist who's pulled over a receipt documenting the officer's name and the reason for the stop. The Fair Fines and Fees Coalition, of which I'm also a member, it, it got a FOIL request back from the police department and found that over a four-month period from June 25th to October 28th, only 60 officers of the over 500 assigned to patrol actually wrote a stop receipt. What we also found in that, that FOIL request response was that 68% of those stop receipts were issued to black motorists, even though black people only account for about 38% of the city in total. So having that stop receipt requirement codified into law, much like the, the duty to intervene, which the common council codified earlier this year, will, I, we think, provide some more emphasis on the law and on the requirement and, and convince officers that they actually need to abide by it. It will allow us to better hold officers accountable and it will allow us to see the sort of disparate impacts like we've already seen when police pull over drivers of color more often than, than white citizens in the city. So for all those reasons, we would ask that you consider this law and, and pass it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other speakers on this item?
Yes, Samantha White with Minority Bar Association. Thank you, council members, for putting this item on the agenda and offering us the opportunity to speak on it. There's several things that I'd like to cover that my counterparts have not. When it comes to searches, this law will provide a level of transparency with the police actions. It requires the police to document consent using tools that are already readily available to them. The microphones that are on their shoulders to record 911 and dispatch calls, their body cameras that the council has equipped them with, as well as written forms to document consent. Now, it's very important that the council understands that this law does not prevent the police from conducting a search when they have a warrant or any other exception to the warrant requirements that are applicable under the law, such as probable cause or when the search is incident to a lawful arrest. However, when this is a search by consent, the public will now be notified that they do not have to consent to that search. The documentation would be there to show that the consent was obtained without threats, without promises that they would be released immediately after. This is something that we should do to protect our citizens. When it comes to having a name tag on an officer's uniform, it's very important that we address some of the rebuttals that we are anticipating from the police officer, from the police department. They have concerns about doxing. We understand that, but we must balance the needs of 740 officers versus the needs of 255,000 residents. When the police captain spoke to the Buffalo News, and this would have been Captain Ronaldo, he stated that approximately two dozen officers had been boxed, which, which shows us that the majority of officers, over 700 of them, have not. Yet we are infringing on the ability of 255,000 residents to identify the officer that is approaching them. It, it doesn't make sense. We've been told, file a FOIL request. Well, FOIL requests, it's not an adequate substitution. There's many technical reasons to deny a FOIL request. Furthermore, anybody who has submitted a FOIL request recently, they're getting a date back of April 20th and an excuse that COVID is impacting the ability of the police department to man the, the request because of, you know, working conditions and reduced capacity within the police department or whatever the case may be. But this is not a timely or adequate response to removing a name from a name tag.
Samantha, if you can just wrap up your final point, that would be appreciated.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other individuals? Council President Pridgen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to those who brought this law forward. I do think that it is very important, thus item number 14 that is tabled, in which I have asked the, what this council has asked the mayor's commission to recommend police policy to respond within 30 days. I know that they have met, at least I was informed, they met once, but it was kind of introductory. I think that this is so important that, that the reason that I asked when wrote the resolution that, so that we're all on the same page and the council isn't doing something that could later be vetoed and just going back and forth and this thing gets delayed. However, if, and I don't know, and I know council, the majority leader is on and, and Councilmember Nowakowski, who is on that committee that was actually authored by the council, requested by the council. So I, I did read that Majority Leader Rivera was going to pick up this issue in that forum. However, at, at the end of the day, though, if we don't see this begin to move forward, what I don't want to see is we wait until, you know, next summer and we're still talking about this. This is something that's very, very important. And I know that now it's cold out, you know, there's layers of clothes, but I totally agree with those who have brought this forward, from John to Miles to Samantha, all that, you know, is scary. Actually, you know, especially for people of color, but actually for anybody, when police pull you over and, and stop your freedom, but especially from people who have experienced more traffic stops. And, and at, at the end of the day, I just think this is important. We, we've seen it, and I've been watching it and talking to my colleagues in Syracuse to find out what was the pushback, what are the problems? And really, from what, at this point, what I feel at this point is that the, the benefits far outweigh the bumps in the road. I also agree, and I know that's not the item, but I would ask council, the Chief of Staff, to begin to draft, to request our Corporation Council to codify into law, as was requested, because it's so important that people understand. An executive order is one thing, but a law is totally, totally different. And I'm referring, of course, to what Mr. Gresham talked about earlier about the stop receipts. By and large, this council has supported that. And I do think that if we're going to really talk about police change, that we can't just talk about it and we can't kick this can down the road hoping that, you know, the requests will go away or that now that it's not summer and people are not outside protesting, that we don't have to move swiftly. I think it needs to be moved swiftly on both items. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to this committee for doing their research and bringing this information forth to us. I just have one question, attorney with the committee. How does Syracuse officers execute this? How is it actually done?
Quite, quite simply, I mean, it's, it's when somebody is pulled over, the officer has to give the person his name, the reason for the stop. If they are going to search, they're advised that they do have the right to, to not consent to the search. And at the end, they're given a card with the officer's name, the badge number, the incident number, and information that, where they could file a complaint with Internal Affairs or, or with the Police Civilian Review Board. It's a very simple procedure.
Okay, is, is that something that, so is the civilian review board that monitors that basically? To make sure it's being done?
In, in practice and in theory, that's what should be done, that's correct. And, and not only that, but the statistics are, are available to the public. So if there was any pattern of, of discrimination, it, it would be, it would be obvious because the statistics are available to the public.
And, and that goes to the point is that, you know, when Miles talked about getting the freedom of information in the statistics, you know, sometimes we get information and we question it. But when it's through an independent party, you're hopeful that, that, that information is the, but you got the information, Miles, from the police department, correct?
That's correct, Councilman, yes.
Thank you.
And, and I just want to point out practically, the police now are, are equipped in their patrol vehicles. They have the ability to issue appearance tickets on site because of implementation of another executive order that was pushed for this summer. So that's, by that same sort of mechanism, they have the ability now to print other things, including, you know, stop receipts. And if this law were to pass, also the documentation that Attorney Elmore referred to.
I, I definitely support Council President, this council supports this effort. You know, as we continue to hear about unarmed black men being killed, we just had another shooting killing in Ohio. And we, we have to do something, and I've said it over and over again. We have a moment in time to address this issue. As Council President said, we can't continue to kick it down, down the, down the road. We have to continue to address this in every way that we can. And it just seems like right now it's been stalled and we have to continue to put the effort behind it. You know, and I think of the legacy of our former Council President George K. Arthur. And Council President said he's a statesman. And I know that he cared so much about this community. And I think that when I leave here, I want to have a legacy that we did something, we accomplished something for the betterment of our community. And this policing issue is a huge issue. And I'm hopeful that we can come together and coalesce around something that's critically important, that every single day we've seen an unarmed black man killed because we have not put in place the proper protocols and processes to make certain that police officers recognize their role as well as the community. So again, I applaud your efforts and look forward to supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Council President, it's correct, we've held three meetings and the mayor's commission. The first two meetings were mostly introductory and talked about the mission of the Buffalo Police Department. And the meetings have been directed by the mayor's staff. We did, our last meeting brought up the diversion program because we were asked to bring that up. My impression from the meetings is that a lot of things aren't going to be dealt with in the short time that this commission is going to be there. They are looking to hold other meetings. I did mention at the, at the, the meeting that the common council was looking at some point to codify some of the things that the mayor had recommended. We did the carryo horn law and perhaps the stop receipt or the, the right to know. We don't know, I told them that the common council at some point would give them an audience where they can come, the same way they come before the commission, that they can come before the common council and even the advisory committee. Now, as far as the, the name tags, I found out about a change of policy after reading the newspapers. We didn't get a call from the commissioner to tell us that there was going to be a change of policy. As a matter of fact, I called the commissioner to try to find out what was the rationale or the reason behind it. And he talked about the police officer's safety. I was always concerned that, that we don't hide behind a badge, that, that there's a policy there that, that would have a negative impact on people's ability to file complaints and hold the police department accountable. And we have to reconcile that, the need for the public to know who the police officer, reconciling with the need for the safety of the police officer. So that was their rationale, was the safety of the police officers and if they have received packages and they have gone to their homes. But I, I still have some concerns. I think we needed more information on that policy in terms of data, just not come tell us a, you know, people's lives at risk. We, we needed to have some information. And I think going forward, you have to show us something. When you're going to take away people's rights to know, it better be for something that, that is very compelling, not just to draw, it's, it's for safety. We need data, we need information. I don't want to take a person's right to know. I mean, I worked in the police department 25 years and I had the badge on my, on my outer uniform, never had a problem. And I imagine many police officers have had them over the years. But it's become a problem all of a sudden, maybe because of social media, I don't know. But it's, it's something we have to reconcile. We just can't let it go like this. We have to make sure that the people's concerns and their right to know is very compelling. And I, I know the police officer's safety is compelling as well, but we have to reconcile this. We have to make some decision which way to go on this. But this is a policy decision that the Buffalo Police Department made, obviously without the approval of the common council. I don't even know if we have a say in that, other than codifying certain things. So I just wanted to give you an update on where the commission is and what their plans are after the commission is, is done with the work and they make the recommendations to the mayor. I don't know if the recommendations that we'd like to see include it. I don't know if the recommendations that we'd like to see include it will actually be in there. And so this Common Council would have to make some decisions and determinations after then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no other speakers, then we will table this item.
Motion to table?
Motion is to table, seconded by Council President Pridgen. Is the Attorney presenter here on Item Two in the Fillmore District now? 982 Broadway? If the person is, we can return to that item. If not, we will move on to Item Number Four.
Mr. Chair, Mitchell Stenger should be on. Is he, I see him, he just needs to unmute, just press the unmute button. It should be in your left-hand corner.
You hear? I'm not hearing anything, so we're going on to the next item. If you can call Item Number Four, please.
Item Number Four, unconditional restriction on open container law.
Item's open.
This item is open. We will, anyone here to speak on Item Four or Eighteen can speak now. This is regarding the restriction on open container law.
If I can interrupt, Councilman, this is Mitch Stenger. I just finally got off mute here, and if it's convenient, I'd like to know if we can revisit Item Number Two before moving on to Item Three.
Well, we will, sure.
Back to it.
Sure, we can hold this item in abeyance and go to your item.
I appreciate that.
If you can hold on a second, we have a motion to hold this item in abeyance, seconded by Council President Pridgen, motion to revisit Item Number Two, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize for the inconvenience. My name is Mitchell Stenger. Some of the Councilmen, especially Councilman Rivera and Gal, Galumbek, will recognize me from working with the food trucks in the past with the city, where we came up working collaboratively with the city with new food truck legislation, which has been for a new business plan that has been the model in other communities. So I have a good track record of working with the city, and I hope to have the opportunity to do so. In this instance, for 982 Broadway, and behalf of my client Akil Cade and his partner Nasir Adel, I provided the council with a two-page summary of the backgrounds of my clients and a business plan. And both Mr. Cade and Mr. Adel, they've partnered together at a number of marked food stores, the Union Market at 177 Riley Street, which is in Pridgen's neighborhood. They've been operating that for over a decade. That's a family store that has been Mr. Cade's family for over six years, and that's been operated well without any citations or violations. And Akil became involved in that when his uncle was shot and killed there in 2011, and took over running of that store. And then Mr. Cade also has managed the Super Price Chopper at 1582 Genesee Street, where he and his brother Mohammed, they took over that store back around 2001, when their father was killed while operating that store. They took a small mini-market and grew that into a neighborhood grocery store that's done very well. I know Councilman Noakowski, as that's in his district, is very familiar with the Super Price Chopper. And what Mr. Cade has done is, his proposal for this Broadway Fillmore Fresh Foods are doing business as BFF Foods, is to basically take the Super Price Chopper's model and put that in 982 Broadway into this store that's been vacant for five years. And what he also would like to do is add a bakery. Where he'd be doing Middle Eastern type of bakery and cakes and similar to what the Super Price Choppers has done. And it's a business model that's worked there, and he has worked with myself, and I've worked with a business marketing consultant to identify a niche in that Broadway Fillmore neighborhood that we think we can fulfill by having a specialty grocery store. This is going to be locally sourced meats and cheeses, it's going to have fresh, organic produce, and also prepared meals. There's a real market in this neighborhood for meals to go. And Akil's going to use a delivery service and also with ordering online, where people can either call and have their meals delivered in the neighborhood or go in and pick that up. And I think there's a real niche market for that. He's arranged for parking the building next door, the store next door is a women's store, the Rainbow Clothing, and it's the same owner, same landlord. So the parking lot next to that, he'll have parking for that off-street. He's also partnered with the gentleman that owns the Buffalo Fresh Stores for additional parking there if need be. Our store's not going to be doing halal meats as Buffalo Freshes, but they will have locally sourced meats that he has developed through his relationship, already working at Super Price Choppers, and he has a relationship with Farm out in Boston for locally sourcing these products. We are not going to sell any tobacco or alcohol products. This is not going to be a cornered little mini-market where people go to buy cigarettes and beer and Lotto tickets and things of that nature. This is going to be a 4,000-foot store to start with. He has an option to expand that with the landlord to 8,000 feet, and it's going to be a well-lit store that will have reasonable operating hours. We're proposing from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and it will help be part of the revitalization efforts of the Broadway Fillmore District, because I know that the city's planning on spending a lot of money and putting into the Broadway market, but you have a vacant store that's been empty for five years. So you have a gentleman here who's going to invest his private financial equity, and more importantly, his sweat equity, with a great track record. And you don't have to take it from me, you don't have to take it from him, just look at the track record this gentleman has, with 20 years' worth of experience in retail grocery business, and without any violations or citations. So I would ask that this matter be submitted by the council to the entire council for a public hearing, and I will be submitting shortly to the council a marketplace analysis summary that will support the idea that this store will be a real asset to the community in the Broadway Fillmore District, and hopefully it can help the whole Renaissance of that area.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Noakowski?
I just want to make sure, is there anyone else on the call that's speaking on this matter?
My client Akil Cade called in, I don't know if he's on the phone.
Yeah, I am, I'm here.
There you go.
If you would like to touch base on anything that your attorney did not, you have the floor.
My name is Greg Oma, I'm a neighborhood resident of the Broadway Fillmore area. I live about a block from the proposed location of the store. And am I being heard?
Yes, you are, Greg.
This is not the applicant, though.
Is what?
Greg, you have the floor.
Well, personally, I've read some of the detail behind the store, and I skeptical that it offers anything that would give the Broadway Fillmore neighborhood, that would augment the current offerings of the Broadway Fillmore neighborhood. There already is fresh food, meals to go offered in the Broadway Market, the Aldi does deliveries. Without any more depth, definitive information on all these so-called linkages, I personally don't believe that this is really what the attorney claims it is. I've read his so-called market analysis, and it doesn't have any data or demographics associated with it, which you would normally see in a market analysis. I don't believe the business plan is really a business plan. I think it's a lawyer mumbo jumbo designed to get past some potential opposition, but it doesn't really fit the need for what, doesn't really fit any needs for describing what's really going to happen there. Although I did, I am happy to hear that at this point, no alcohol, tobacco are proposed to be sold, but I personally don't know how that particular model of theirs can survive without that, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers here on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll go back to the District Council member for your recommendation.
Thank you very much. I do want to take just a quick minute just to run through this. So thank you, Mitch, for being here. As you know, I've talked to you extensively and spent, gave you a lot of my time and your client a lot of time. I am a new District Council member. I know that this item is heard before the whole council, but my colleagues will be deferring to me. I am the District Council member, and I know my district better than anybody, especially on this council. I would like to make that very clear. The second thing is, is I also use my discretion to listen to my constituents. It's in a unique, that proposal's in a unique area. I just want to make sure that things are not duplicitous, and that is what my constituents are saying. We have across the street, we have two meat markets in the Broadway Market, to the next we have a halal butcher, we have access to a supermarket, there's a Save-A-Lot, there's an Aldi. I just want to make sure that I don't stamp something and just have it go away because some lawyer called me and wants to give me a good spiel. I understand that you are representing your client in the best, to your abilities and making a good proposal. I don't rush into proposals. I believe in planning things out, listening to people, and not running something through. So if you do have a couple of minutes, Counselor, I would like to ask you a few questions. The first is, why is your client not the applicant on the city permit?
Well, he is the partner with the applicant's Nasir Adel, and they have worked together as a business partnership, and they are in a partnership together. So he is partners with Nasir.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure I understand your question. Why is he not, why has he not been named applicant?
Because as the city, we have to take whoever's name is on the permit, and we hold them responsible. So that's just wondering why the client that you're representing, his name is not...
As your work, Councilman, when he submitted this several months ago, prior to my being retained, he did so, and then he met with you in September, I believe it was. And I could certainly change that to amend it, that he wouldn't be on there as well. But when he met with you, this is when you were asking him to move it into the Broadway Market.
I did, I had a really long conversation with him, and the conversation changed quite some time over him and I talking. We had a good conversation, I mean, a local councilman that's going to beat him out there and have a healthy conversation. And as we've spoken to before on the phone, that his conversation is not exactly accurate to what he was telling you. That's okay, you're defending him. I have a few more questions.
Sure.
The second is, will you be, you know, how many folks do you expect to hire in this location?
I think at the beginning, it'll be somewhere between four to 10, and then it will be, if it expands, it will be in addition to that. So we're talking, you know, it could be a dozen, it could be two dozen, but it depends on the size of the store that he's allowed to put in there.
Does the applicant, will he be, will he be hiring from the neighborhood?
He would be very much interested in providing positions for people working in the neighborhood. As if you noticed on my summary of his background, Mr. Akil has worked with Buffalo Peacekeepers in the past, he's volunteered his time with them, and despite the personal tragedies he's had in his family, he hasn't become bitter, he's tried to make a better community. And part of that is giving opportunity to at-risk youth, and this would be part of the continuation of that. He'd be happy to employ people from the neighborhood.
Okay. And as you know, this is a big space, and the side needs work, and there's garage doors, and does your client have the resources to be able to invest in this large location to bring it up to speed and be something that we can be proud of in Broadway Fillmore?
Absolutely, Councilman. He's already invested quite a bit of money on the inside of the building. He has signed a lease. Now, I understand that a lot of times on the council, you people don't look at that favorably, because it's putting the cart before the horse, but I understand that. And since I've become involved, he has made substantial plans for a design of the store that should be available, and he has a commitment where he's going to be there for five years. This is not going to be, we're going to go in and see if it works for six months and then pull out if it doesn't. He has made a real commitment financially and with his split equity, where he's already worked on the inside of the store with the landlord. And the landlord, as you know, is an attorney who owns quite a few buildings in your district, and he has a good working relationship with them. That's why he's going to allow the parking on the side of the building. But yes, he has the resources and backing, and has already invested substantial funds.
I'm glad that you brought that up, because, you know, as you know, Counselor, I look at the purview of the neighborhood, not because some guy got a lease from a building. So that's how I have to base my decisions, out of what's harmonious to my district and to the community around it. So I appreciate, we've been, we email each other a lot, we text, we call. I'm still reaching out to some folks. You know, I don't, I'm not treating you, any of this application any differently. I make sure that windows are sometimes replaced before everything. I make sure all my Ts are crossed and my Is are dotted, and I will be doing it this way. So I will be tabling this matter so that we can have some more conversations within the next two weeks, so that we can, we can come up to it.
And as I said in my email yesterday, Councilman, I very much look forward to continuing that dialogue with you, and I thank you for the time that you've already invested in this project as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is to table, seconded by Council President Pridgen, and we are now returning to Item Number Four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item Number Four, we have some speakers here regarding the open container laws. Kevin, I believe, Kevin, you are the first speaker, so if you can take the floor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Councilmember. I very much appreciate it. Good afternoon, Councilmembers and everybody on. I will be very brief. I am the Chief Attorney of the Criminal Defense Unit for the Legal Aid Bureau of Buffalo. We're the de facto public defender in the city. We represent approximately 70% of all criminally charged persons in the city of Buffalo, in addition to doing many of the arraignments of cases that either are later picked up by retained counsel or transferred to the assigned counsel program. We have submitted a letter. I won't belabor it by reading it to you, and I'm sure that the council has it, you can certainly look at it. But on this issue, and in concert with my colleague, Mr. Elmore, and Mr. Gresham, Miss White, you know, minority populations, people of color are unfairly targeted, they're disproportionately impacted by many of our criminal statutes, and notably this statute, the open container law. I think what's first interesting to note is that this law does not deal with public drunkenness, does not deal with drunken disorderly, it deals simply with consumption of alcohol in public. And I will tell you that the law does very little to prevent drunkenness in public or drinking in public. It is designed, if it wasn't designed initially, it's currently being used to basically get into the lives of people that the police think might be involved in something. If they see somebody with a cup of what they believe to be alcohol or the paper bag that they believe there might be alcohol in, they use that as an opportunity to confront that person, and then perhaps use that opportunity to engage in a search of that person, and then perhaps, you know, use that opportunity to violate their constitutional rights. You know, we don't see very many of these charges as standalone, in fact, very few. And the reason is, is that the fine or the penalty for the offense is extremely low. Very few people, nobody's going to jail for this in virtually every circumstance, the fine is $50. So, you know, the police aren't going to use, are not going to stop somebody, and if they find them, that they have alcohol on them and nothing else, very often they're let go, or, you know, they're not criminalized, those charges never end up in court. But certainly, they use the opportunity to try and ferret out other offenses, usually in an unconstitutional manner. This creates stress and strife in the populations. You know, I think we've seen over the years that the broken windows philosophy of policing, it doesn't work. You're talking about over criminalizing populations, you're talking about over policing populations, creating distrust in neighborhoods and distrust in our clients and in the citizenry of Buffalo for really no reason whatsoever. This is a small gesture that this council can take to simply put this law aside, because the benefits of continuing to enforce it absolutely do not outweigh the damage that you're doing, whether the police are doing inside the communities. And that's all I'll say on the topic. I don't want to go on very much longer. I know that the agenda is very full, but the Legal Aid Bureau of Buffalo supports, you know, a moratorium on this law, and I think our letter bears that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers on this item? Aiden, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I wanted to thank the committee as well for having me back and bringing this issue back to the committee for further discussion. I also don't want to recapitulate much of what's been said. I second everything Mr. Stadler Meyer said. I think that was very compelling. But I wanted to note that we in Buffalo, who've grown up here, have lived here for a while, spend a lot of our time talking about the mistakes of the past, and a lot of those mistakes are beyond our power to fix. You know, I'm talking about putting a convention center in that destroys the grid downtown, or, you know, renting the Hamlin Park neighborhood with an expressway, or destroying architectural gems. We do not have power to... We do not have power today to fix these mistakes. But the passage of this open container law was a mistake and today you do have the power to fix it. It'll be extremely easy and something I hope we can accomplish very quickly. And not only that, not only is this a rare opportunity where we can fix a mistake of the past, but it seems that all of your constituents are in favor of it. I mean, there are activist groups, good government groups, legal aid. Every business owner I've spoken to is in favor of getting rid of this law. I've not heard any opposition to it. And frankly, I don't think that one could advance in good faith, any argument against repeal of this law. So I wanted to get on today to hear more from the council members and anybody else who wanted to chime in on this, to try to figure out how we can move this forward and accomplish repeal swiftly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers on this item? Okay, since there are no other speakers on this item, we will table this item.
Motion to table.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number five, ordinance amendment, chapter 337, preservation code.
Items open?
This item is open and we are told that there are representatives from the preservation board who would like to speak on this item. I see Gwen Howard on my screen. Gwen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank councilmembers Noakowski and Rivera for their efforts in moving this forward. In the city of Buffalo, we have a long and rich and diverse history that is evidenced by the places that we have and are built resources. Even historic events are often documented by the places that they occurred, not just the activities that have happened. Some of those are obvious and evident and others we learn about over time and we continue to learn about. We'd like to support this amendment that allows us to perform our charter duty, which is to hear about nominations for landmark designation and then make recommendations to your body to approve those landmark applications. This amendment would afford enough time for that to occur, which has not been happening in the past. And so we're very supportive of the moratorium on demolitions. Once action has come through our, through our board and a recommendation is made to you so that you can consider it and have the hearings as you do in order to hopefully approve those landmark nominations. We also want to thank staff for doing all the legwork to clarify and confirm that there is in fact a 60-day demolition process and not a 30-day demolition process. We have been trying to have people understand that for some time and we're appreciative that staff has put that forth and made that known to everyone. And this would have a memorandum of understanding that all departments would honor that 60 days to allow us to fulfill our obligation and allow us to hear the public and make considered recommendation and thoughtful recommendation to the council so that your committee, the legislative committee can do their due diligence in completing the next step. So we support this and thank councilmembers Noakowski and Rivera for putting it forth.
Thank you very much. I just have like a couple of questions for Gwen while you're here. So essentially, essentially if the preservation board recommends to landmark a building, this would prevent any action from taking until the council votes on that?
A court, Councilmember Noakowski or Rivera, in case you would like, as the authors of this and the presenters of this, to address it. Otherwise, I can, I'm happy to do so.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Okay, yeah, so this, once a recommendation is made by the preservation board, who would have the 60 days rather than the unofficial 30 days that had happened before? Once a recommendation is made, then the process would stop and the moratorium. Pardon?
Gwen, this is Karen. I, I'm not sure exactly how you're calculating the 60 days, but based on what you just said, that would be inaccurate. We do agree that it's a 60 days and it was my investigation and understanding that, you know, that for to clarify that. But from what we understand, the 60 days starts from when the application comes in to OSP. And once OSP has looked at the application, the 60 days starts. So if OSP takes five days to look at the application and sends it off to the preservation board, the preservation board has its 30 days. OSP has that 30 days plus the additional 25 days. So we have 55 days plus that five that it would have taken initially, 60 days in total to make the final determination. So we don't want it to be that the preservation board has to add additional 60 days. It does not. It is a total of 60 days to make a decision on a designation in total.
Understood. It's just that the previous 30 days for everybody to act was an insufficient timeline with all the notices and public hearings and everything else. So this extends that process timeline over 60 days rather than the 30.
I think we were just, I think it was being interpreted inaccurately where it was, everybody was thinking it was just 30 days. But we have now understood that it's not 30 days, it's actually 60 days, which is a longer time period for everybody to act and send the recommendation to the planning board. Sorry, not a planning board, but to the common council. And then with this new law, we're going to have a moratorium on demolition. So once the planning, the common council has not acted, no actions can be taken on the property during that time.
Correct. So to answer the chair's question, the updated ordinance places a moratorium on any permit for a property once the preservation board submits the recommendation for a historic landmark application. The demo clock would officially stop and the council would then hold a hearing and make a final determination on the landmark application without fear of anything being demolished in the meantime.
Thank you, I appreciate that and it's good to clarify that. I know since I've been on the council for over five years, there has never been a building taken down in the Delaware District that was being considered as a landmark or voted on as a landmark. So this specifically is not something that I've dealt with in the Delaware District. But I understand that this has happened in other districts. So I completely understand the desire for the preservation board to work on this as well as the sponsors. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Noakowski, then Majority Leader Rivera.
Before the council, before we speak, PBN is also here too.
Okay, is there a representative from PBN to speak?
Hi, this is Jessie Fisher, Executive Director of Preservation Buffalo Niagara.
Hey Jessie, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you Chairman. And thank you to councilmembers Noakowski and Rivera for introducing this important legislation. Like many of you, yesterday morning, I opened up my Buffalo newspaper and came across a quote from famous Hollywood director Guillermo del Toro praising our city as absolutely amazing from an architectural point of view. Of course, this is a news to those of us who live here. We find so much pride and joy in our historic built environment. In addition to adding to our quality of life every day and to our deeper cultural understanding of our various communities. Our existing community have been a huge part of our city's recent economic rise. Cultural tourism is a many, many multimillion dollar industry that is ever increasing in our community. And relative to other types of tourism, we know that cultural tourists stay longer and spend more money than other types of tourists while also supporting the assets that we ourselves as locals get to enjoy year round. In addition to the vast majority of development taking place in Buffalo is because of our historic stock of buildings. Over a billion, that's a billion with a B, dollars of investment has been induced in Western York through the exclusive use of the historic tax credit. This has resulted in thousands of high-paying jobs in all of our communities. With all of that, you would think that we would be protecting our historic building stock. And in fact, many people just presume that the beautiful historic communities that they live in are already protected. And in the vast majority of cases, unfortunately, they are wrong. In the city of Buffalo, fewer than 5% of our buildings are currently protected under the preservation ordinance. And that 5% actually covers up that it's very uneven throughout our city. Six of your council districts actually have 1% or fewer of their buildings currently covered under the ordinance. For instance, in the Delaware District, Mr. Chairman, of the almost 9,000 tax parcels that currently exist, 14 of them are currently protected under the ordinance. So we know that we have a lot of work to do to make sure that the places that are important to people, the places they live and work, the places that have so much meaning to them are protected. However, it takes a tremendous amount of time and money and work to get buildings listed. Our Michigan-Sycamore Historic District, which has a dozen buildings in it, has taken us three years to put together. So often neighborhoods are playing catch-up. They don't realize that their buildings aren't protected and it isn't until that demolition application or those rumors of demolition happen that people start looking at whether or not they really are protected. And so those neighbors are often put in that position of playing catch-up. And that's why this ordinance is so very important, that it gives everybody the time, the council, the preservation board and those neighborhoods, the time to take a look at those demolition proposals and the time to see if they do in fact need to do more work to ensure that their neighborhoods are protected. So we strongly support this change to the legislation. And again, we thank Councilmember Noakowski and Councilmember Rivera for introducing it. And we urge the full council to vote for this measure when it comes up as it is an important issue across our entire city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Noakowski.
Daniel Sack, can I say something, Mr.?
Sure, absolutely, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you very much. And I hope you've all been healthy through these holidays and been careful about COVID protocols. Yes, I'm with the Campaign for Greater Buffalo. I support this amendment. Anything that makes it easier to demolish a building is not a good idea. This makes it possible to give more consideration before a building is demolished and that's a good thing. I would like to see even more improvements in Article 337. The timeline, for instance, was extended a couple of years ago by the 15 days between and the timeline. And that could save a month or more if that 15 days was even 13 days. Because two weeks is 14 days and 15 days often means it's going to take a month rather than two weeks. So there's that and other improvements that should be made. I was a little bit confused about to talk about 30 days versus 60 days. My belief, my understanding is, is that this doesn't have a limit for 30 days or 60 days. This basically puts a moratorium on demolition while it's being considered. And I hope that Ms. Gordon can clarify that and agree that there's no 30-day or 60-day limit here in this amendment, but rather simply a moratorium. Thank you very much and all of you stay healthy.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera, Noakowski, and then I know if we can move things along, we have older, more people here to speak on public hearings.
Yes, so people understand this is a, only applies to a landmark application, not to other demolitions that are happening in the city of Buffalo. This is only when somebody wants to landmark and it puts in an application with the preservation board and then the city gets it. Then the clock starts running 60 days from the time OSP gets it, as Corporation Council mentioned. Then it comes to the common council and then there's a time period for the common council to consider action. And I just want to go back to Karen Gordon. How long does the common council have at that point, once it's turned over to us to make a decision? Because it can't be forever. We have to make a decision because obviously we need to decide whether or not development goes forward. Karen, can you answer that?
Sure, yes. It's 60 days based on chapter 337. I believe it's 60 days, anywhere between 60 and 62. So I don't want to be held to, but I think it's between 60 and 62 days based on chapter 337. So within that time period, the common council will have to make a decision. But as the common council deliberates during that time, nothing can happen to the property because it will be a stay on demolition due to this new ordinance amendment.
And should the council not make a decision within the time period, what would happen then with the application?
Well, based on, I think, some of the last changes we've made with the rules, the common council is now required that whenever an application comes before its body for a decision, that a decision has to be made. That you either say, yes, you approve or no, you don't approve it, but you have to make a decision within that time period. So we don't want to go down the road of not making it within the time period because then we're looking at possible litigation. Since, you know, our rule says that we have to make a decision on any application that comes before us for either an approval or a denial.
So we have up till 62 days from the time we receive it from the preservation board to make a final determination?
Roughly around that time, yes.
So that gives us plenty of time to consider landmark applications. If we had this in place, when they demolished the two properties on West Shutea, that property would still be up there because I thought that it was worthy of being landmarked. And unfortunately, that was the impetus why we're here today, why we introduced this legislation, to put a moratorium so we can consider properties or buildings that are landmark eligible. So I want to thank Councilmember Mitch Noakowski and the preservation community and Corporation Council for helping us craft this amendment to the legislation and particularly a councilmember Mitch Noakowski who ran with this. So thank you very much. And I want to thank all the councilmember, including Councilmember Galumbek, who in the very beginning was very receptive to us getting together and working on some form of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be brief, but I do want to also thank the staffers, Dan Zelensky and Jim Montor, council staff who did an extensive amount of research. And I just want to make sure that this is a very practical policy change. This allows the common council to do its job. So if the preservation board does have a landmark application, that when it comes to the common council, we can at least do our jobs and make a decision on it. Because if the building is demolished by the time that the item is before us, then that whole application is moved. So this just places the moratorium on when the common council is hearing it. So it can have a fair hearing in the common council and be heard by the elective representative of that district. In the Fillmore District, we have four historic districts, Allentown, West Village Historic, Cobblestone and Broadway Fillmore. So as you know, good policymaking such as this would also help my district and it's why I am passionate about this. As you are aware and how it's been discovered, there has been no new timeline changes. It's just been doing our homework and realizing the amount of data we already had within the code and just clarifying that and making sure that administratively, all departments are on the same page so that we can move forward productively when these applications come forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay, I have several questions that I'd like to ask. I would like to either table this or visit it later at the end of the meeting. Do the sponsors have any issues with tabling this item and discussing it in two weeks?
I don't have a problem with Councilmember Noakowski.
Tor, we can table it.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Motion to table by Majority Leader Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Noakowski, next item.
Item six, request pause on operation of school zone cameras.
Items open?
This item is open. There, we've discussed this many times. I don't have anything else to add at this point. If Council President Pridgen or Councilmember Wyatt would like to, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know that the mayor has come out publicly and said he does not support a pause. But I just want to bring to people's attention, yesterday I did a Facebook Live where I actually had almost 6,000 views to date regarding this program and the confusion and the just, I don't even know what to say. We passed on November 17th legislation that the times were to be specific, that we're going to move beacons, that we're going to have better signage. And to date, none of that has really happened. I have two new signs at West Winspear and Winspear that are up in the sky where you have to be looking up to the clouds to even see it. There's no beacons on the street. And then the beacons in which we've already talked about were not, have not been moved out. And finally, the times have not been changed. So you put. So you put up new signage saying that there's a school's on camera, but you don't put any directional and then you don't correct the time. The time is not seven to three. The time is not seven third, seven to six. It's two, it's seven thirty to nine thirty and it's two thirty to four thirty. So again, this is all confusing the public. People are enraged. They still don't get responses back from the vendor. They're calling three, one, one. They're trying to have hearings. This thing is just a total mess. Yesterday, as I drive through a Bailey, I see beacons blaring, which I can see, beacons are going at four thirty, which again is outside of the time in which people were to be ticketed. Then I go to two schools. The, uh, academy, the nurse, the school, uh, day, the daycare for children, which is not really a school, but it's on Bailey. It's closed. I go to the charter school that's on East Amherst and Westminster. It's closed. So I'm trying to understand why do we have the beacons going when school is out, actually? And motorists are now even further confused because they know that their children are at home, at home as well. So again, we're asking the mayor, we're asking the administration to appease to their sense of dignity and respect for the public right now who are going through so much with COVID to deal with this program and to put it in order. So if you're talking about opening it back up in February, that it's, all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. Right now, there's a such confusion behind this thing. It's just unbelievable. You would think we'd be sending a man to the moon that has so much confusion. I don't think it's that confusing. I think it's just a, a matter of the mayor and the administration coming forth and doing what they said they were going to do on the seventeenth, that you were going to move beacons, you were going to put out better signage. And to date, none of that has happened in a, in a meaningful way. And it's confusing the public and it's angering them. And now that these folks are going to get a stimulus check, most of the stimulus will be paid for tickets as opposed to helping them with their quality of life. So I, I'm, I'm going to appease to the mayor and hope that he takes this under consideration because for him not to take it under consideration baffles my mind. And that's why people believe it's a money grab. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to table this item unless there are any other speakers to get to the public hearings that we have over forty members of the public that are spending their afternoon with us. I would like to get to those unless there's anyone else.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number seven, ordinance amendment, chapter four seventy-nine.
Motion open to public hearing.
I'm sorry, this is, uh, this is a motion to table, seconded by Councilmember Golumbeck.
Take from the table items eight, nine, ten, eleven and eighteen.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number eight, special use permit, three thirty-five Dote for primary, secondary school in N three R zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski. Is there anyone here to speak on three, three, five Dote Avenue in the Lovejoy District?
Uh, yes, uh, this is, uh, Tomaso Briardico.
Tomaso, from, from the same hometown in Italy that I'm from. Go ahead.
Yeah, Buffalo, New York. We're here in Buffalo, New York. Uh, and, um, looking for a letter. Thank you very much for, um, allowing us to just come forward in front of the council. Uh, this is an existing building which has been on, in the, uh, community for over a hundred years. It is a complex of buildings, uh, which are in excellent condition and have been maintained exquisitely. And we would like to take the building and renovate it to make it into a school for the community. So it's taking a building which has been, uh, hasn't been used as efficiently as it should be. But it's a beautiful building, all stone. It's a great complex and we're going to be adding, uh, additional parking to accommodate, uh, teachers and students and buses. And we're going to be renovating the building so that it can be used as an efficient, effective place for education. Uh, the Buffalo Academy of Science Charter School has been operational in, uh, Buffalo for the past fourteen, fifteen years. Uh, they have a tremendous, uh, commitment to, to education and working in our community. They, they, their track record is excellent and this building is, uh, another, uh, another outreach for them. And they have, this is going to be their fourth building and continuing their commitment to our community. I work as an architect and I'm very, very happy to be a part of the team. But it's their, you know, hard work and their commitment to excellence, which makes this all possible. And we were able to, uh, obtain this building, so, um, we're going to do our very best to make this a tremendous asset to our community. I don't know what else can, I can tell you, but if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Okay, are there any other speakers on this item? Hearing none, we're going to Councilmember Bowman, the Councilmember of Lovejoy District.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. When I heard that this, uh, building and the nuns were leaving, I'm sad to see them go. Um, but, uh, when I heard it was up, up for sale, I was curious as to what would happen, but I was very excited when I heard that Buffsai was moving in. They actually took over, uh, school eleven on Poplar in my district as well and did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Over there, so I'm, I'm very excited to see what they're going to do, um, at, at the former monastery. So, um, at this point, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, move to motion to approve.
Motion is to approve, seconded by.
Close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number nine, special use permit, seven, twelve Elmwood for tavern and outdoor dining in N two C zone.
Motion open to public hearing.
Seconded by Council President Priggin. Um, the, there, I've received several emails, um, on this item. Um, before the applicant speaks, um, I just wanted to point out, um, just procedurally what happened. This item was at the planning board last, um, either last week or two weeks ago, and the planning board recommended it with that it gets approved. Um, but they recommended that it gets approved with several conditions, including installing a wooden fence on both sides, uh, to buffer the noise, installing greenery along the fence to buffer noise. Uh, outdoor would have to be closed at ten o'clock during the week and eleven on the weekend. No music would be allowed outside. Um, those were some of the items that the planning board recommended. Um, also, we'll, we'll start with the presentation and make sure everyone gets an opportunity to spate, to speak. So I believe Mr. Wingfelder is here.
Councilman Ferello, uh, Ferelletto, it's Bob Clarisi. I'm going to lead this conversation if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you. For an essence of time, I'm going to refer to my notes, but I want to thank everyone on the council and, and all the members. My name is Bob Clarisi and I'm one of the owners of this project. Uh, the project we're proposing today entails investing an estimated five hundred thousand dollars of private capital and a taken lot house, a dilapidated garage and the surrounding hardscape at seven, twelve Elmwood Avenue. This project is going to be fully green code compliant and does not involve tearing any structure down. Instead, it protects, enhances and revitalizes two designated contributing buildings in the historic Elmwood Village neighborhood. That matters a lot to the building owner who lives with his family in the Elmwood Village. High Violet, the name of this proposed restaurant, is a small scale restaurant and a bar on the first floor of the old Victorian house on seven, twelve Elmwood. The prevailing trend in restaurant design is for big, open concept spaces with concrete floors, high ceilings and minimal aesthetics. The result is a whole lot of noise, so much noise that for middle aged guys like me, it's nearly impossible to have a conversation with whoever, whoever I'm out with. High Violet will be the opposite of that experience. We're embracing the small scale spaces that make up the property and focusing the design and creating beautiful intimate places where ambient noise is minimized and customers can actually hear one another when they're out for a bite to eat or a quick drink. Our focus is, focus is on creating an upscale cozy and curated experience in both the properties inside and outside spaces. Indoors, High Violet will feature five unique but visually cohesive rooms that maintain a high level of intimacy. Outdoors, the property's backyard will become a garden courtyard that'll have limited seating and occupancy. And we're proposing transforming the garage structure into an enclosed tea house suitable for three seasons of public use. We've taken public outreach very seriously. We not only talked to dozens and dozens of neighborhood contacts as we were working on the concept, but once we had a plan, we hand delivered letters to all the property owners on the surrounding block, including all the owners on Elmwood, Breckenridge, Ashland and West Ferry. This was back in June of twenty twenty. These letters offered every neighbor the opportunity to tour the property and learn about what we were planning. We also had several open houses during July and August twenty twenty and walked about a dozen neighbors through the property and the detailed plans. Through the fall, we've continued to communicate with interested neighbors to share the state of our plans and certainly listen to their feedback. Based on that feedback, we scaled back the operating hours for the property's rear to the hours you see reflected in this filing. Our community outreach has resulted in seventy signatures on a paper petition we circulated in the neighborhood, eight letters of support from individuals in the area, including EVA, and four hundred and seventy signatures on an online petition backing this project. The owners of the six adjacent Elmwood parcels, three to the north, three to the south, are all in full support and excited about the venue. We think this breadth and depth of encouragement speaks volumes to the community's desire for this type of project. It's been a long, hard, nine months for the small businesses up and down Elmwood Avenue. And the upcoming months don't look much better. But because we believe in the Elmwood Village's long-term trajectory, we're eager to spend a half a million dollars to revitalize this property and create another social asset for the neighborhood. Thank you for having me today.
Okay, thank you for your comments. What we're going to do is open up the floor to everyone who wants to speak. And then at the end, um, if there's different questions that people have, we'll address them all at the end. So everyone has an opportunity to speak first, so it's not a back and forth. Um, we have several people here that want to speak on the item. I could only see a few people on my screen. So if someone wants to start and we will just, we'll go through accordingly.
Well, I could start if that's okay. Jacob Karkowski. Um, just briefly, I'm, I'm, I live about two and a half blocks from the proposed location and I've gotten a walkthrough of the, the new space. Um, I've gotten to know the owners of, uh, some of the owners of the company. Over the last few years, they've become, uh, really friends. I'm an attorney in town. I don't represent anyone in this matter. I'm just here to speak and support. And what I think is really most important here, and I know there's a lot of people who are going to speak in support, but what I think is most unique, um, as somebody who is in the neighborhood all the time, who walks with his two young daughters by that location, you know, many times a week. Um, I think what, what is, is, is beautiful and important here is that we have a group that is trying to maintain the, the architectural integrity of this building. We're not looking to put in something that's out of step with the neighborhood. Um, they, they want to do something that fits very much with why we live in Elmwood. Um, it, it's unique, it's artistic, it is, uh, open to the community. It will be an asset in every aspect. And it's a place that I, I hope will be opened and approved. Um, and I know there's been some talk of some restrictions and I hope that those are removed because I think our businesses, my, a lot of my legal practice is representing bars and restaurants. And, uh, this industry's hurt so bad that if somebody wants to invest something in such a beautiful, high design concept, um, I would hope that we would have, uh, really open support, uh, and unwavering support for what they're trying to do. Uh, these are people that we want to own businesses in our neighborhood. We don't want them to go elsewhere. And if you live in the Elmwood neighborhood, you live there because of the density, because of the vibrancy of it. And, uh, so I, I think my pitch is just simply that I think this needs to be opened. Um, I hope that the council supports it and I think it's a wonderful project.
Thank you. Um, next speaker.
Uh, this is Alma Brown.
You have the floor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. I'm Alma Brown. I live at four oh eight Ashland. I'm co-chair of the Ferry, Ashland, Breckenridge Block Club. I'm here to speak for a group of my neighbors whose backyards are behind and in close proximity to the seven, twelve proposed outdoor backyard seating for the cocktail lounge. Many of these neighbors have sent their own letters directly to you, Councilman Ferelletto, um, asking of this request for a special use permit not be granted. First, we wish to thank Bob Clarici and Barry Henigan for their outreach to the neighborhood. We do appreciate, we did tour and it's, we appreciate that you did that. One of the things that I ask is that you review the aerial map of the block, not just the parcel line map, to see the proximity of the now garage structure to the backyards on Ferry, Ashland and Breckenridge. This is a commercial project that will adjoin residential backyards. We all know Elmwood patios are great. We love them, but they belong on Elmwood Avenue, not in the backyard where they adjoin the residential neighborhoods. And this is, project is asking for a special use permit. Special use permit to create an outdoor backyard patio seating area for soup and food and drinks. It needs a special use because this is a use that is not permitted in this location. The planning board has sent it to the common council with a list of conditions, including a one-year sunset to review the impacts. Those of us who oppose the special use permit ask why are there so many conditions? And a review, if this is such a good project, that's because it is not a good project for this space. The businessmen have bought an investment property at seven, twelve. They, along with buying Cecilia's Martini Bar next door, which has a large Elmwood Avenue patio. This would not be a hardship for the businessmen. They would be able to find another use for the property. They would be able to sell the property. But this would be a large hardship for, that would be felt for many years to come for the residential properties that surround this. Please consider the residential properties of the longtime homeowners that asked for the special permit not to be granted for the outdoor patio. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next speaker.
Hi, um, I don't know if you can hear me, but I would love to go next. Okay, I'm Martha Papernik. Um, I actually live directly behind the, um, property at four twenty-seven Ashland Avenue. I am also a part of this block club. I am in favor of this project. I think it will be a nice asset to the Elmwood Village. Um, we all know when we bought our homes that this is a mixed use neighborhood. And I chose to raise my, my children with my husband and we walk the Elmwood Village, you know, all the time. That's one of the wonderful things to have, you know, in our neighborhood that you can walk to shops, mom and pop shops, restaurants, you know, the co-op, whatever, whatever you need. It's all right here. Pretty much is all right, all right here. Um, I look forward to a place that I could go. I mean, I'm, I'm not in my twenties. I, um, you know, I'm older and I'm looking forward to a place that I could go and have a nice conversation and, and enjoy a drink. So many restaurants are kind of loud and you can't hear, so I'm looking forward to something like that if I choose. Um, I think it'll be a nice, nice asset. They have done a lot of research. I did do the tours. Uh, I'm in favor of the, the back tea room, which actually, I'm, my house is pretty close. If you look at the map, I'm at four twenty-seven Ashland. My house is very close to the back end of, of where the tea room would be. I don't know if anyone went to Cecilia's a long, long time ago, but I remember they used to have jazz on Sundays in the afternoon. And I actually miss that nice ambiance of music kind of in the neighborhood. It was never loud. You could hear it. It was pleasurable. I was kind of hoping that they would have something that would be outside, that would be nice. Um, I hope that you approve this for them because I think it's a nice change to Elmwood Village. The saddest thing for me back in March was driving up Elmwood and seeing all the shops closed. change to Elmwood Village. The saddest thing for me back in March was driving up Elmwood and seeing all the shops closed. And we all live here for many, many reasons. And I think that the mixed use is probably one of the biggest draws that we all have living in this neighborhood. So, um, anyhow, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much. Um, I just had a quick question for Corporation Council. If Karen Gordon was on the line, I know the previous speaker said that this is not a permitted use here. Is Karen, are you here? Okay, well, Corporation Council isn't.
I am on, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. So one of the previous speakers said that a restaurant here is not a permitted use because it needs a special use permit. Can you respond to that, please?
Sure. Um, special, I'm not sure what the district code is, the zoning code for this, um, um, restaurant is, but special use permits, yes, are the, the vehicle that is used to, um, establish, um, restaurant license and operations of, um, or a less, uh, restaurant's ability to operate. And so special use permits are one of those permits that run with the building and not the person who may have applied for it. So usually sometimes we'd have a situation where an application for a special use permit has taken place. It does exist for the building. The ownership may change, but a special use permit still exists. I'm not sure if this is a situation, um, this is a similar situation to, to, to that, or if it's something different, but I would have to know what the actual, um, zoning code is to see whether or not restaurants are allowed in that area. And even if they're not, whether or not there is a special use permit on this property.
Yeah, this is, just to get into the nuance, this is a, this is zoned M2C. And, um, it does require, require a special use permit, but it's my understanding that based on the law of New York State, a special use permit um, is required in, in many different instances for, and that a restaurant is a permitted use here. Um, if it was not a permitted use, they would need to get a variance and they are not required to get a variance. In fact, um, the different permitted uses for this specific zoning where this property is includes fraternity house, sorority house, group home, hostel, alcohol store, daycare, food pantry, gas station, medical clinic, hookah, vaping establishments, and vehicle repairs. And those are a list of, um, items that are permitted in this type of zoning. Um, and if they weren't, they would need a use permit. So I just wanted to clear that, clarify that item before we get to the next speaker.
Right, correct. Special use and zoning are two different. Um, and you're right, the zoning, um, of zoning variance would be required if the use was not allowed. Um, but my understanding is regardless, you would still need a, a permit in order to operate a restaurant. And how we do it in the city of Buffalo is by having the applicant apply for a special use permit that would allow him to operate in the area. Totally different from a zoning variance where the variance says you're not allowed to do something, but we've given you an exception. So you're correct.
Okay, thank you. I know there are several other speakers.
Hi, hi, my name's Marika Kemble.
Hi, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks to all the council members and staff for your public service. Um, my name's Marika Kemble and I'm a small business owner and a mother of two chill, school-aged children. And I've been a resident of the Elmwood Village for the greater part of the last 25 years. I'm speaking today in favor of the special use permits being requested to open and operate High Violet. And as a longtime resident and property owner in the village, I'm not immune to the concerns associated with development in the neighborhood. And I'm certainly in favor of the process being followed by the planning board and the council to ensure that the development best serves the needs of the community. In the case of the High Violet project, I'm enthusiastic that this team applying for special use permits has found a creative and unique way to develop the current building, a building that is a familiar feature of the cityscape for decades. I hope that we as a community can support projects such as this that resist teardown and new builds that disturb the warmth, interest, and architectural diversity of the neighborhood. I'm also aware of the understandable concerns about noise. Understandable because the commercial and restaurant scene of Elmwood does need to coexist with the family residential streets that neighbor it. But as a parent of young children, I am greatly encouraged that the High Violet team has committed to developing this project at a conservative and restrained scale that will add to the vibrancy and livelihood that we love about the neighborhood. The low occupancy of the three distinct spaces in the plans and the fencing, landscaping, and construction that's already been proposed to further protect surrounding properties from noise will greatly manage noise levels. I sincerely hope that the special use permits for High Violet be approved without the conditions currently proposed, in particular, the one-year probationary review period for the special use permits and the music limitations, which I both think would impede, um, the development of the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I just got a message Vincent LaPera. Are you here Vincent LaPera? Okay, another speaker. Next speaker.
I can go ahead if you want me to.
Okay, Ryan, you have the floor.
Sure, thanks. So, uh, I'm, uh, my name is Ryan Burke and I live in North Buffalo on Lincoln Parkway. I am in favor of these, uh, special use permits required for them to open and operate High Violet. Uh, I'll keep this brief, but as a city resident for the past 20 years, I strongly believe this project will be great Brownwood Avenue and the surrounding neighborhood. And I very much encourage, uh, the, the council to approve it. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just got a message. Therese would like to speak next. I got a message on. Therese?
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you for having me. Um, so I'm Therese Dutchlander. I own a business on Elmody Avenue, almost directly across the street from, from the proposed High Violet. And I also live in Elmwood Village and I'm president of the Elmwood Village Association. And I am definitely in full support. I'm just speaking as a business owner. The sheer amount of money and time and energy that the owners of this project have put in is astounding. And I don't think that they would do that if they thought that it would fail. And it, and one of the ways that it's going to fail is if they don't appease and appeal to everyone. And they've certainly, they've done their due diligence. They've sent the letters, they've sent the emails. And I think that the amount of work that they've done is so, so impressive and so respectful and so commendable that I'm definitely in full support of this. And I agree that the additional restrictions on it, the one-year probation period, I think that those are unnecessary hurdles. I think that they've proven that they respect this neighborhood, they respect the people in it, they respect the business community. And I definitely don't think that they need these added restrictions. They, they've shown that they are going to do what it takes to make this succeed. They, they respect the building, they respect the, um, neighborhood, even the way that they've constructed the business to be set up where it's individual rooms to keep down on the sound. And the fact that there, it's an open house for anybody who wants to tour. I think that there's, um, they've just, they've done everything they can possibly do to show how much they care about this community. So I'm in full support.
Thank you. Um, everyone will have a chance to speak. I just got.
Linda Schneeklaub?
Hello?
Okay, give, excuse me, sorry, one moment. Linda, I'll give you an opportunity in a moment. Um, I just, I got a message from Jill. Jill, if you can speak and right after you James, and then after James, we'll go to Linda.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. Um, I had the opportunity to view the property back in July and I don't disagree with what everyone is saying. I think Mr. Clarisi and his group have gone through extraordinary measures to, um, you know, uh, dampen the sound inside. Uh, my primary concern as our property, um, directly butts up against their fence, um, in the back, is the noise coming from the outside. Um, originally, when we first toured the site, it was, uh, it was going to be a teahouse. Um, and there wasn't really any discussion of alcohol being served there. And then when they, uh, up, uh, they actually tabled it the first time. They had asked, uh, one of the reasons they tabled it was they wanted to research, um, the testing, the sound dampening, uh, technologies for both inside and outside the building to mitigate the noise um, that they would, you know, ambient noise that might be taking place there. And we haven't really gotten anywhere with that. Um, we, you know, I, I agreed to, um, arrange things for neighbors to, if they were gonna be testing anything out, um, to give them some feedback, but we haven't really followed through with that yet. Um, so I appreciate the fact that the planning board recognized that obviously this would be an issue and took steps to, um, mitigate that. Um, and we are more than willing to, uh, work with them. Obviously, our primary concern is that this is long-lasting. If we make this change now, um, we can't take it back. And in the future, um, if we don't have owners like Mr. Clarisi and his colleagues, uh, we may, you know, have a wild party in our backyard every night until 11 o'clock on weekends, um, which is not really what we signed up for. Um, I've been a resident here for 20 years and have, you know, ha, a good relationship with our neighbors and, you know, would like to continue to have a good relationship with our neighbors in and including, um, Mr. Clarisi and his group, but, uh, would request that, um, we further consider what to do with the outdoor space. The indoor space, I don't have any objection to. Um, it's the outdoor space and its use as a cocktail lounge that I oppose.
Thank you very much. James? James Sahaki?
Hi, thank you. Um, I will keep this incredibly brief, uh, because so much of my thoughts have already been very eloquently expressed. Uh, my name is James Sahaki. Thank you for pronouncing that correctly. Um, and I am the interim executive director of the Elmwood Village Association. I am coming out in, uh, full support of this project. Um, we've had the opportunity to walk through it and, uh, speak with the, uh, people involved with the project to look over their plans and discuss them at length. And, um, I personally, uh, think that this would be an excellent addition to the village. Um, and I also am in support of it going forward without the restrictions that are posed. Um, I think that the, the folks involved are taking every step to ensure that they will be good neighbors and that they will be an excellent addition to the neighborhood. So, um, I, I hope that this goes through and if so, um, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
Hi, thank, thank you very much for holding this hearing. Uh, I live at 601 West Ferry, which is not a part of the adjacent. I live across the street from the adjacent neighborhood. So I was kind of surprised when I got the information about this hearing and I have not heard anything about this project, uh, which means that it was new to me. Um, I do appreciate, um, a number of the restrictions that have been put on and I'm sure that, um, Councilmember Rivera will remember, um, not too long ago that we had the same kind of discussion around the Acropolis, uh, which was causing a lot of discomfort and noise and, uh, difficult behavior in the streets afterwards. Um, so it seems like this project has been very thoughtful about the people who are adjacent to it and I think that's very, very appreciative. Um, I think, as I understand it, it is really about the outdoor, uh, alcohol use that seems to be causing, and the time, it seems to be causing the problem. Um, and I have just two thoughts about that. One is, um, we really appreciate that this particular owner is being very careful. Um, I've lived here since 1982, where the post office and the shoe repair shop used to be on the street as opposed to a lot of different restaurants and coffee shops. Um, I like living in an urban village. I think it's great, but ownership is not guaranteed. Um, and so it seems to me really important to think about what the future use of this building or the future owner of this building might do. Um, and you're setting a precedent now about what can happen there. Um, and that seems to be very, very critical. The second thing is that we know that in, um, residential, commercial areas like the Elmwood Village is that there, when you create soft edges between the residential and the commercial areas, that is also a very serious reason of concern and starts to decrease the quality of the life of the neighborhood. Elmwood Village is primarily a residential neighborhood that has a commercial strip running through it. I'm sure those people who own businesses or run the Elmwood Village, um, you know, association probably don't think that that's the case. But, um, we're a very stable and good tax, high tax-paying neighborhood. And the quality of life in this neighborhood seems to be really important. So although I'm not likely to have people vomiting in my yard as I did last time that we had this kind of conversation, um, and I'm appreciative of that, I think that the, the neighbors, um, have a right to be very concerned. Vegetation does not block sound. Wood can, depending upon how it's designed. And if you have a good wood fence that's dense, it can actually block sound. Um, but basically, if depending upon the design, the, the details there really make a lot of difference. So I'm hoping that the architect and the owner would be very concerned about controlling that sound. Um, if, if this whole thing goes through, I would rather see, um, not having alcohol, um, outside. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Um, do we have any other people that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, I would like, this is Daniel Sack.
Okay, we'll go to Dan and then we'll go to the next speaker.
Uh, thank you Chairman Farrelotto. Uh, uh, this sounds, from what it's described as, is the kind of place, uh, as long as they have the bourbon I like, is someplace I would like to go to. Um, but, you know, and of course, nobody opens up a business thinking it's going to fail. Uh, nobody does that. But restaurants, especially, bars, especially, we know they go in and out of style all the time. Uh, and if you grant a special use permit this, with this place, without a sunset clause, the special use permit stays and the next owner of the place could want loud music inside and out. And we do not have enforcement of sounds in the city, though we have a, a noise ordinance. It is all but impossible to enforce. Uh, there is one person, uh, who holds the sound pressure level meter that they might use and they work during the days, Monday through Friday. Uh, i- if, uh, i- if a sound goes beyond a property border, that is impolite. I don't want to hear my neighbor's music, even if I like that music. There should be no sound allowed outside. Drinking, unfortunately, many people get pretty boisterous and loud when they drink. Not everyone. Some people pass out. That would be better for the neighbors if they passed out, I think. But, uh, this sounds like a very nice idea, but I think the, uh, restrictions that the planning board recommends are excellent. I am, also have to express my disappointment with the Elmwood Village Association. They have come back after years of not commenting on such projects to comment on this. They're really effectively an Elmwood Businessperson's Association. I know this because I used to be on the board and on the design committee of the organization. And I was fired from my volunteer commitment because I was too much in favor of the neighbors and not in favor of the businesses so much. So, um, I think that, uh, this sort of place has a place on Elmwood Avenue, but there should be no drinking outside and back. There should be no music outside. And it should be clear that the music shouldn't leave the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Vinnie.
Hi, uh, my name is Vinnie LaPera. I've been, uh, lived in the Elmwood District for over 35 years. And I think this project, High Violet, is with this corner and with the, the whole village needs. So I'm in, uh, 100% in favor of this. Uh, go Bills.
Go Bills. Any other speakers on this item?
Yeah, good day. Uh, my name's John Fox and I've been a real estate agent and broker in the Buffalo area for over three decades. And I'm very, very, very familiar with the Elmwood Village. I've taken the time to review this project in detail and as envisioned, and I see it as an absolute natural and a perfect fit for the area. To boot, it's being executed by folks with a proven track record of planning, building, and managing successful businesses. Needless to say, I'm in full support of the High Violet project at 712 Elmwood. And one last thing, one item I'm uniquely qualified to comment on. Now, mind you, these are just the real estate agents on my team. We've been called by five different restaurants, bars, and taverns in the Buffalo area in the last 30 days. These businesses are now for sale or they are preparing to get sold. They can't survive. They're out of business. And guess what? To date, no buyers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Allison. Allison, are you here to speak on this item?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Um, hello, everyone. My name is Allison Levis. I am a City of Buffalo resident and I was a student in UB's Environmental Design Program. So I've studied this. So I've studied the city and the policies that have shaped it, for better, for worse. I'm also in the restaurant industry, so I am in full support of this project for several reasons. I worked at The Grange Community Kitchen in the Village of Hamburg for several years. And I've witnessed the positive impact a well-thought-out restaurant and patio space can have on the community. Now, more than ever, we're seeing the benefits of increased outdoor seating and how Western New Yorkers are committing to spending more time outdoors. The Grange was allowed to maximize its seating capacity and therefore profitability. And the owners were able to fully carry out their vision, creating a versatile and functional space that is full of charm and character. And I think that's a great example of how a busy restaurant could function in close proximity to a residential neighborhood. Not only did the village residents absolutely embrace the project, it became a staple for the community from people from outside, all over the county as well. It's a source of pride for the locals, something they wanted to show off and share with others. And judging from the owner's established position as a cultural asset in the Buffalo community, High Violet will elicit the same response of pride, enjoyment, and usefulness. I think the Elmwood Village is a neighborhood that's so intrinsically tied with the Buffalo identity. By making it more attractive, you're improving the overall image of the city, showing the world that this is a desirable place to live. More and more people are choosing to live in, in urban environments. And a lot of those are younger people. And we need to cater to this trend in order to attract new residents. Considering we've struggled with population loss for so long, we need to do all we can to present ourselves as a vibrant place to live. And the way to do this is through small-scale development by talented locals who have something new and interesting to offer. People want access to amenities. They want spots that have character, are locally owned, and validate their decision to live where they do. And I think High Violet is right in line with this ideology. It would provide a unique boost to the city while fitting in with the neighborhood fabric. And thank you for your time. Have a happy New Year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone not going over the three minutes so everyone could speak. Next, we have Jordan Barnes. And when the speakers are done, I'd like to go back to the applicant for, for a recap and just a couple of quick questions I had. So Jordan, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adam Kellerman. This is my girlfriend, Jordan. We both live in the Elmwood Village. I own a few small businesses in the Elmwood Village. She also owns a salon, which is right next to the proposed location. I'll keep it short. We're both in favor of this and think it would be a great addition to the Elmwood Village.
Thank you. Are there any other people to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none.
I would like to chime in if I could. Thank you, thank you. Members of the common council, it's honored to address you today. My name is Rob Collard. I'm speaking today in full support of the High Violet Project and the use of the special use permits. I live on Auburn Avenue in the Delaware District. I purchased my home in July 2009. I've lived in the city of Buffalo for the past 15 years and I'm a lifelong Western New Yorker. I am impressed and gotten to know the owners and people involved in the High Violet Project through some of their associated businesses. And I've been impressed with their attention to detail, their aesthetic leanings with regard to their business and how they conduct themselves personally. As a property owner in the Elmwood Village, I'm very invested in seeing successful, diverse local businesses that offer something unique, having character and relevance. And I think we can all agree that those character traits are part of the brand of the Elmwood Village. I see the High Violet Project as not only carrying on those traits and traditions in a positive way, but they're also, this project is a positive addition to the Elmwood Village community beyond what can be found in the abundant strip malls that populate the suburban landscape of Western New York. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in front of this body and to offer my full support of the High Violet Project.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other speakers on this item? Okay, Kate?
Hi, my name's Caitlin. I'm a commercial real estate agent. So I live and work in Buffalo. And I can attest to a lot of what the previous real estate agent said. We don't know what Elmwood will look like after all of this. And we all need to do anything we can to support new business and existing businesses on Elmwood. So full support.
Thank you. Any, any other speakers? Going once? Going twice?
Yes, I have something to comment.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Dominic Surianello and I'm just calling in to express my full support of the High Violet Project. It's a project that I'm looking forward to being a guest in. And I think it's going to enhance Elmwood Village and all that it has to offer.
Okay, thank you very much. So I know we've received a lot of comments on this and I appreciate and value everyone's opinion. I just had a couple of questions. If we can return back to the applicant. I just had a couple of questions. Bob, what, well, first of all, did you want to address anything in three minutes? Did you want to address anything that was said?
No, I'm, I'm open to your questions.
Okay, the question is specifically regarding like the wooden fencing that the planning board was talking about. Wooden fencing and green. And I believe Linda said it needs to be dense wood. What can you or the architect or planners do in terms of like wood fencing or other items that will reduce conversational noise?
So to create the intimate space in the backyard, take sound out of it. We were going to already introduce fencing between us and Acropolis within the zoning limits. And we may even need a variance to go high enough on that. And so that was all part of it out of the gate. And then to add the greenery is part of the vibe also. So it, it was part of the original plan. It's part of the plan going forward. And certainly, we're working with a company out of Rochester that does sound retention, sound morphing, and sound escaping to help us decide is there electronics that we can use to counteract the voices and/or what materials absorb versus bounce. One of the partners in the business also, we used to, is an ex-musician. He used to work in a sound studio. So we certainly have a little bit of expertise in-house. Plus, our architect, John Wingfelder, has been researching different options on a way to keep the place looking good and create that intimate vibe. And, you know, curating the sound is something we're doing inside and out as part of the, part of the design.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I would just, I would urge you to continue to talk with your neighbors, especially, I know jail directly borders it in terms of height of a fence, because I know on other projects where the neighbors directly behind it have worked with the owner and they've built, they've gotten variance to have fences higher than what's allowed. I believe it's a six-foot fence is what you're allowed to have here and anything above that would require a variance. But I know on other streets, I've seen where you have a residential street on one side and a commercial street on the other. The person who lives on the residential street have actually come out and supported variances to have fence high, higher fences than the six feet. So I would just urge you to continue to, to work with your neighbors on that fencing. So I appreciate everyone's comments. I think there's certainly a lot of great points raised. I think the fact that the applicant is investing in a vacant structure on Elmwood is a very good thing. I, I think that's, that's great. I know that there's certainly some concerns that some of the neighbors brought up, which I think, I think that everyone who's brought up any concerns has been very reasonable. And I certainly appreciate everyone from sharing, everyone for sharing those. I think this will be a great project in Elmwood. I'm going to recommend that this gets approved with some of the conditions that the planning board had suggested and recommended. I really would like to see you work with the, the neighbors behind you, specifically regarding like the fencing and the sound and what could be done regarding the conversational sound. So I appreciate everyone's comments and we will close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
A motion to approve with conditions?
The motion will be to approve with conditions that will be read in, in the meeting next week, seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number 10, special use permit, 1210 Broadway for Tavern in N3C Zone.
Motion, open the public hearing.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Mr. Chairman, there are two individuals that are here to speak. The first is the applicant, represented by James McLeod. And the second is Vince Ferracio from inspections and will clarify what this item exactly is. Thank you.
Okay, we will start with the Honorable James McLeod.
Good afternoon, Councilman, and to all the other members. First of all, thank you for letting us be here this afternoon. Number two, it's given me greater credit and appreciation for what it is you, you folks do down there and the time that you put into, into your work. And appreciating the time and appreciating that there's more on the agenda that you have to do. What is being asked for is a granting of a special use permit for an upper portion of a building located at 1210 Broadway. That upper portion would be used for a, an incorporated not-for-profit private social club. Members only would be in attendance. We have, over the course of attempting to put this together, worked closely with the City of Buffalo's Permit and Licensing Bureau. They've come through. They've approved that which we're attempting to do. We've also worked with the County Health Department that have come through, reviewed the location. And it's my understanding they have no objections to that. We presented to the planning board a week or two ago. And it's my understanding that the planning board has recommended the approval of the permit. And so we asked you to, to do just that, to recommend approval at the appropriate council meeting.
Thank you, Judge. Next, we have Vinnie to speak on this item. And Vinnie, you're still on mute. If you can just unmute yourself, please.
I should be unmuted now.
You are unmuted.
That's something that my wife would like to do sometimes, but very easily. I'm intimately, I have intimate knowledge of, of 1210 Broadway from over the years, conducted inspections there. This special use permit to involve the upstairs is more just a technical. It's a glitch. It should have been granted with the previous councilman. However, it, it got tabled for some reason and here we are today. But we have been through all the rules and regs with, with the ownership of 1210 Broadway. And we are hoping not to stand in their way of, of being a good, a good business in the neighborhood. And we've kind of laid out certain rules and regs again with them. And we've gone over many issues of capacity and, and hours of operation and whatnot. So we're looking forward to, to a good working relationship with the ownership. And I think that this would be, or should be approved.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In closing remarks, I just want to summarize that this is, my office has been working extensively with Department of Inspections and Services, the applicant, Erie County Department of Health, the Law Department, and a few other entities. And this is just circling back, as Mr. Ferracio said, to something that should have been done. And now we're just closing the loop now. So you can make a motion to.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Motion to approve?
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11, special use permit, 752 Elmwood for Tavern and Outdoor Dining in N2C Zone.
Motion, open the public hearing?
Seconded by Councilmember Galumbek.
Hi, so I'm Dawson Kang. Thank you for speaking with me today. The location is a restaurant called Wasabi, Japanese restaurant. It's a restaurant that's been open for a few years now. And the previous, the previous owners of the business, K, I believe KNC Japanese Inc., closed due to, due to COVID. And my parents had opened DMV Japanese Inc. to retake over specifically this location on set. And we just need to reapply for the use of alcohol as well as outdoor dining. Currently, we're not doing outdoor dining because of COVID. And everything is takeout. There's no construction or anything going on. I am meeting with the next plan, with the planning board for the next meeting. And, yeah, we're just trying to basically continue on the restaurant workings by replying the new license. Currently, we're working under the old licenses and we're just applying for a new one, essentially.
Okay, thank you very much. And like the previous item that we had on Elmwood, this is a permitted use at, for the building. It's an, it's currently a restaurant. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on 752 Elmwood, just a few doors down from 712 Elmwood, which we just discussed?
Whatever it was. Yeah, well, they've been using it for a decade. So this was just a personality. And what happened was that project went.
Would anyone, is someone trying to speak or are they?
I'm trying to speak.
Okay, you have the floor.
My dog is barking. She's throwing me off. Yes, I own the building next door and I, I'm just concerned, is Wasabi staying as Wasabi Restaurant? Or is something new going in there?
No, it's, it's, I'm sorry. It's completely, it's just completely the same. Everything's the same. Just the ownership of the actual restaurant name is transferring from KNC to DMV.
So you, you're not doing any, any further construction or any plans for any? I know you have a small outside dining in the front, you know, which is very acceptable. Are you planning?
So this application here is just for the use permit to operate the tavern and outdoor dining? This is not a, can, they're not looking, we're not looking at any construction or, or anything like that. It's just allowing basically what's currently there, not adding anything else.
Correct.
It's just would stay, stay as it is?
Correct.
There's no additional dining outside in the back or the front or?
No. My dad actually removed, we had a metal fence in front of, of our restaurant. My dad removed the side fence because he was worried that it would get in the way of people moving. And since we weren't using the front for outdoor dining right now because of COVID, he took down the side fence for easier movement for pedestrians. But I believe we'll probably put that back up once COVID is gone. And we put, we do allow customers to do outdoor dining. So if there is any construction, that would be just putting back the metal fence.
Just replacing what was there originally?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other speakers on this item? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and recommend approval.
Motion to.
Thank you.
Seconded by Council President Priggin.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number 18, support for repeal of Chapter 69 Alcoholic Beverages Open Container Law.
Item 18 is going to be received and filed. We already discussed item 18 when we were discussing item four.
Motion to receive and file.
Seconded by Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes, no further items?
Any other speakers? We good? Okay, second, second, the motion to adjourn by Councilmember Galumbek.